This podcast is powered by the MIT TV of Romeo, Michigan. If you're looking to start a podcast for your business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. Their in-studio podcast experience allows you to record perfect audio and capture amazing video. That's all right here at the MIT TV Podcast Studio in Romeo, Michigan. Contact them now via email for a free consultation and to schedule a studio visit at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com. So Erin, today's program has a lot to do with the interests that the community has told us at the MIT TV that, you know, they're interested in knowing who they're gonna vote for in this next election in November. So we're kind of pressed every election season to do this kind of work. Because most people, one, don't know how many board members are in the educational, you know, system. They don't know what they do. And they don't know who to vote for once they get there. And then you feel obligated because you came there to vote. And you end up just voting for a name. So, you know, it's nice to just get to know who our candidates are. So they know a little bit more when they decide to check that box. So we decided to kind of put these kind of casual podcasts together so we could get to know you. And you're running for Board of Education for Romeo High Schools?
Correct.
And this is your first attempt of running?
Yeah, I was a delegate in my last term in, you know, service. And this year, yeah, I threw my hand in the ring and we're gonna go for Romeo School Board.
Great. Well, tell us a little bit about how you got here to Romeo.
So 24 years ago, moved to Carriage Hills subdivision. So I've been in the Romeo School District for 24 years. I've got three older kids that have graduated from Romeo. They're all very successful. They've done very good. The academies.
They went through the academies?
Oh, yes. And so they're all, my daughter, oldest, she's graduated from Walsh. She has her master's degree and her CPA. Yeah, she's working for one of the big accounting firms now. And yeah, they're all doing very good. My youngest is going to Walsh now and my middle is doing HVAC.
Wow. So were any of them related to the specific academies that they chose? Because we're kind of the founding fathers of the academies. We were instrumental in not all the committees when they brought this concept to the village and to Romeo High School. So I'm often interested in knowing where these kids go and if they're relative to the academies that they actually were in.
Yeah. So the both that are in accounting, yeah, went through the Business Academy.
Perfect.
My son HVAC, he was doing more in the engineering.
Yeah.
But he's doing great in the HVAC field, so.
You look at, you know, the difference of the students that are coming out of the academies and not so driven towards a college degree, that working for a large corporation. You know, and they're doing very well.
Sure.
You know, they're getting into small firms, they're being entrepreneurs, they're getting into the trades.
I've been an advisor for years now on the Architecture and Engineering Academy.
Sure.
With Eva Dawson, worked very well with her and it's great. Actually, we've had a group of teachers come out for a tour of our facility down in Detroit.
Oh, yeah.
It's one of the, you know, premier new supplier facilities locally. So they were able to see injection molding and large stamping and assembly. And I was very, very impressed. Because not only, you know, as an engineering background, I'm thinking engineers are gonna come out to this and, you know, be interested in it. But there was from the business, a gym teacher was there, you know, there was all over disciplines in the high school. And they were interested in seeing what's going on. And when I asked them, I says, you know, I'm very impressed that you guys are here. They says, we need to know what's going on in the local industry so we can prepare the kids for it. So it was very good that there was that big of an interest.
Yeah. And in this area, you know, I've been here all my life and been involved in the schools for the majority of the time. And we have great teachers, we have great parents. They're active, which makes the kids more active.
Sure.
And I'm thrilled to hear that because part of the plan was to also not only get interns, get the children, get the students to go out, but also get the teachers who don't know anything more than just being a teacher.
Sure.
To understand and, you know, bring that understanding back to their classrooms. So that's really encouraging to hear that they've done that. And I know they've done that throughout the academy, you know, slots. But and in manufacturing and engineering, we tend to be pretty strong on that, in that area. So especially local, too.
Yeah. So I'm the Global Director of Design and Engineering for a local supplier. And we have a very, I've got groups globally, you know, Europe, Asia, North America. And my group locally in North America, we have an internship program. And this year, we had an intern. We found him at Oakland University, but he was a Romeo grad.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep, you can see my interview with him on my Facebook page. He came in, he was a rock star. He did great.
What was his name? Do you remember?
Frank Wachowski.
Okay.
And he attributed a lot of the capabilities. Like he, for a first-year intern, he was already very capable straight off the bat. We had a little bit of training to get him up to date in the software we were using, as well as injection molding, excuse me. But he took off right away. We had him doing some engineering change. He designed a bunch of fixtures for us for displays. And he did very, very good. And, you know, we'll hope to bring him back in the future. But he did say that if it wasn't for the Romeo academies, you know, he would've struggled.
Right. Yeah, he wouldn't have the opportunity. And, you know, you see the difference in the personalities and the willingness to be trained and not come in and go, listen, you know, I got a master's in this and this and I want to be the boss of you and I want to make six figures.
Sure.
And I want to do it my way.
That was one of the discussions we had with the teachers when they came out that day. And I was impressed with the question. They asked, what do you look for when you're hiring? And I says, right now, with the younger crowd, I look for drive. If they don't have drive, you can take one that has a lot of knowledge in one area, but if they don't have a lot of drive, they usually don't want to go and learn about, you know, outside of their box. You can be a kid with a lot of drive, you know.
Yeah. They're doing something right. They're doing something right. So is that why with your influence and, you know, your experience in that, is that why you decided to take your time away from your family and your job, your business, to go out for a board position?
Ah, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm hearing it's a very thankless job, but.
It is. We watch all the meetings.
I'm up for it. I've served on multiple nonprofit boards. I've been on committees. I, you know, I have no worries about, you know, being part of this or anything, no concerns. I'm kind of a problem solver at work, so when we have issues, I'm the one that's kind of called in and says, okay, how are we gonna figure this? You know? So when coming back to what led me to this, you know, I see how good the academies were and how well they helped my three older kids. You know, with the two younger ones, I want to be a part of making sure that that continues for them.
Right. How old are your two younger kids?
Fifth grade and ninth grade. Fifth grade academy and ninth grade.
So they choose their academies?
Yeah, so ninth grade, he's choosing, choosing engineering, yes.
Oh, wonderful. All in the family. You must have an influence.
My older ones, they did accounting, so engineers aren't big fans of accounting. They keep us in line.
No, but that's nice that you have experience with your kids getting out of the Romeo schools and then a couple more coming back in.
Yes. I'm surrounded by accountants. My wife's an accountant as well.
Okay. Wow. Well, that keeps you engaged.
Yes.
And, you know, most people don't get actively, you know, interested in volunteering their time unless they have a reason. And that's a lot of reasons. So that's why, that's why you decided. Why now?
Why now? Like I said, I did the delegate last time. And now just it's a good point in my life to get involved and take on this.
So do you, do you watch the meetings?
I've watched meetings. I've not gone to, I've been to other school board meetings. But I've watched a lot of the Romeo School Board meetings as of recent to, you know, understand more.
On the MIT TV?
Yeah, it seems, it seems like it's.
The answer is yes.
Yes. It seems like it's a very good board right now. There's not a lot of confrontation. It seems like they're getting things done. And, you know, I definitely want to be a part of that. I mean, you know, confrontational boards tend to, you know, just follow up and not get things done.
Right. Is there anything that you have seen that you would like changed or added to by your presence on the board?
Ah, I don't see that there's a real major change that needs to happen. Like I said, it seems like it's smooth running right now.
Yeah. Yeah. It has run pretty well this year. I mean, if you look at what they've gone through, you know, with COVID.
Yes.
You know, that was, that was a nightmare for everyone. And, you know, there's a lot of questions that come up in a community that watch something like that, that are, you know, that see their kids go through that. You know, do you, do you look at mental wellness, mental illness, mental, you know, wellness situations that our kids, our students have had to go through, through COVID? And worry about that or are concerned about that?
Sure. My youngest was, you know, right in the middle of the whole COVID. And I think that, you know, when it started, we didn't know what was going on.
Right. It was unknown.
Yes, it was a big unknown to everyone. But then going into the lockdown and then after the lockdown going around for so long, I think we should have realized that, you know, this isn't working. This isn't where we needed to be. The kids need to be active. They need to be in their sports. They need to be interacting.
Social.
Social, exactly.
It affected a lot of them.
Uh huh, it did, yes. And it was, it was very hard as a parent at that time. You know, my youngest son got a very high rating in Call of Duty, but it was very hard to get him out of the house to get him to do things.
Right, right.
But he's still a very social, you know, kid as it is anyway, so it wasn't bad. But I'm sure there's a lot of situations where people had kids that were more introverted. Excuse me, and, you know, struggling with to get them involved, interacted in the school activities and that.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that our district did an excellent job on how they handled it. They pushed, you know, they pushed the gamut on several issues, you know, getting our kids back in, getting the masks off, you know, supporting them.
Sure.
And I think that one of the issues and one of the questions that a lot of people ask new board members are, you know, you've already gone through this. You've already had this as a family, as, you know, watching your kids. Do you have any plans to bring any more of that to our school system? As far as support, you know, for mental health issues and all that. And since you've already been through it, you know, you kind of know how to guide people towards that. And I know that that's been an initiative on the board.
Sure. It's a hard question, one aspect that it's gonna be an unknown. If something like this happens again, it's still gonna be the unknown of what it really is. You know, so working through that, what that unknown is, and trying to work through the minutia of what's going on, it's, you know, it's not gonna be easy. But we should have learned from the past and learned that, you know, locking down hurts the kids, keeps them unsocial.
Would you put your kids back in masks if it happens again?
I would not put my kids in masks. Well, I'm an engineer and when.
You're logical.
Well, one thing, an N95 mask is .95 microns and the virus was .04. You're trying to stop water with a chain link fence, okay?
Good quote, good quote.
So again, there's a lot of things that people get very reactive of. And, you know, and I'm probably a little more logical as an engineer on things. So, yeah, I wouldn't probably be as reactionary to it.
Yeah.
I don't claim to be a mental health expert, but I do feel that there, you know, there's definitely a lot of needs that are in kids, you know, that, you know, supported in mental health and that. I'm always willing to listen to what mental health experts have to say and, you know, understand what they're saying.
Right.
But I always liked the quote, be inquisitive, not judgmental.
I like that one, too.
Understand what people have to say, you know, and work through it.
Be open-minded, enough to take it in. You know, there's the buzzword, critical thinking.
Yeah.
And, you know, critical thinking is definitely needed for an informed board. How do you see yourself having the time between your family, your career, you know, your children, your wife, and everything else? How do you see yourself having enough time to do the critical thinking? Do the critical investing of time to look at the issues? Be informed by the time you get to the table?
I'm an engineer. I like to study. I like to learn. I like to, you know, figure things out. I will spend a lot of time investigating, understanding things. Yeah, some things might suffer, some things might not. Are you asking about assigning time? But I'm a very disciplined individual. So whenever, yeah, whenever there's a task at hand, I'll figure it out.
And how are you with conflict? You know, a lot of times on the board, it's unanimous. A lot of times it's not.
Sure.
And a lot of times you might agree with the superintendent and the direction that the district is going. But how do you deal with conflict?
Oh, I'll refer back to what I said earlier, too. Be inquisitive, not judgmental. I'll listen to what you have to say, but then I do have my convictions. I will, you know, as an engineer, and this is conversations a few of us engineers have, we like to see the facts. We like to understand what you are trying to say.
Right.
And to form a proper, you know, intelligent opinion, not just an emotional reaction.
Good answer. Good answer. And when you look at how people interact, you know, on a board, a lot of times you can't really have any discussions on the board. Your board, your job is to present the facts, present the ideas, and then vote. And a lot of times it takes you going over on the other side of the table and talking, you know, to another board member. And a lot of times, which people have told me this before, that have already been on the board, you know, to just talk after and to listen to each other. And then you can bring a little bit, maybe even if you don't have the exact same opinion, you can bring a little bit back to your decision.
Yes.
So I see you in doing that. When, when you look at how our district has done, Dr. Robinson, you know, he's, he has all these reports, you know, everybody gets reported on. And he got a good report last time. The budget, got a great report. If you look at how they're doing, do you see anything that you feel that they haven't done or haven't done well that you could improve on?
I guess I wouldn't say that I have, I don't think there's anything that I've seen that they haven't done well.
They're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, as I say, I don't, I'm not trying to come in here and change things. I don't see major issues. But I feel that Romeo Schools is a very good, strong school, and I want to maintain that. That's probably more of what my concern is, to maintain the academics that are there and, you know, keep the status quo and try and keep a lot of the other, you know, political minutia that's coming in out of it. And keep us focused on, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic.
Exactly. Exactly. Get back to the basics.
One of my biggest feelings is, and is we're preparing the employee of the future.
Right.
And with the academies, it's set up to work that way. And, you know, I think that being a big part of, you know, preparing the student of the future, they need to be focused on what they need to be learning, you know. And when you get in the job place, there's not a lot of emotional decisions. It's getting the job done, you know.
Right.
You know, and getting home.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And then, you know, you talk about facts and you talk about politics and, you know, not bringing those into the environment of our students and our children. And we have so many people that are on social media now. You know, the big subject is.
This is a new thing for me to be on social media.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. I'm not a social media person.
Welcome to the wacky world of social media.
But I did create a Facebook page to get this going and, yeah.
So where can they find you on your Facebook page, by the way?
It's Erin Boyer for Romeo Community School Board.
Okay, good. Good to know. You know, the number one question that we get is, will they agree to mask our children again? And will they, will they vote against any vaccinations? You know, where do you stand on that?
I personally am not vaccinated. I, I'm not a fan of vaccinations. I do feel it's your right to be vaccinated or not be vaccinated. That is your choice. I don't have any say in your choice of doing that, nor should you have any say in my choice of not doing that, not getting vaccinated.
Right. Or what the parents decide, since it's.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I don't, I, you know, there was a big push in some companies, excuse me, to be vaccinated. I didn't have to deal with that, thank God, but.
Right.
Yeah, but I feel it's an individual's choice. It's not something that should be dictated on. It's where America, it should be free.
Right, right. And as a parent, where do you feel that the school system, the district, the board, the superintendent, the principals and teachers, what percentage of a role do you think that they should play in a child's, you know, formulation of, I mean, you, you're a parent, you have lots of kids, and now you're gonna be a board member.
Yep.
So where do you lay between there?
I find that interesting because unfortunately, 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 the fact is that the kids, you know, you pretty much have up until, you know, 10, 12 years old, where you're highly influenced on the kid. Then they start getting their outside influences. Then you always hear the joke when they're, you know, 14, you're the dumbest person in the world, you know? And then from there on out.
You're the smartest.
Until they have kids.
Right. Then you're the smartest.
Then you're back to being smart again.
Right.
So I think there should be a lot of transparency, excuse me, within the school and in dealing with students and helping parents. That, you know, things should not be hidden from parents or anything. But, sorry, coming back to the question.
What, what percentage of the role that, you know, parents, because, you know, if you talk to the district also is, you know, sometimes you have children that don't have parents that are, you know, as involved as you are in your children and most of our parents.
So sorry, yeah, coming back to the question, yes. It's, you know, the school's always gonna have an influence. I feel that the parents should have the ultimate say and influence on their kids. A school should never go outside the means or desires of the parent. They should work with the parent, help with the parent. You know, there shouldn't be any, it should be a politic-free zone, an emotional-free zone. You know, we say gun-free zone, we should put the other two on there as well.
Right.
And just let the kids be kids, you know, and stop influencing, you know, a lot of decisions. Now, granted, you are gonna deal with people who have different opinions. And that's, you know, and that's how we learn to meet, deal and understand people. But, you know, it's a delicate thing to be influential of a kid. And, you know, we should not be pushing a kid toward our own views, allowing them to have their views. Their parents should be more influential of their views.
Right, right. Yeah. And especially as a parent, you bring that experience to the table also. So, you know, we're constantly looking at social media again on that topic. And another big topic in this area has been the possibilities of a decision with transgender bathrooms in the choices that each school would make. Where do you stand on that?
Well, I don't offend you bringing up another podcast. Riley Gaines was just interviewed recently on Mike Rowe. And I think it's a, it's a good podcast for people to listen to because you see what Riley Gaines went through. I mean, it was a little hell for her. You know, she talked about how intimidating it was to walk into the locker room and here is this man changing.
Yeah.
And, you know, it was very intimidating and scary for her.
Right.
I've got two daughters of my own that I've coached and raised. And I don't want them to have to go through that. I feel that, you know, my older daughter played basketball going through, so, you know, she had locker room time. My younger daughter's in soccer right now, but she's not really in locker room time yet because she's younger.
Right.
But, you know, I, you know, there's, it's very important to protect the private spaces, such as bathrooms and locker rooms for the kids. And beyond that, if you look at Riley Gaines, I mean, she had all of her athletics stolen away from her. You know, that was stolen away from her. She was the best swimmer.
Yeah.
And when she tied, yeah, tried to figure that out, a hundredth of a second tied.
In swimming.
And she even says in the interview, I'm sorry, but we have to give the award to.
Right.
And Riley Gaines didn't get that award.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That just blew me away.
It is, it is. It's, I, I don't think, you know, it's taking her rights away. You know, I don't want any individual to have, or any group to have rights over another group.
Right.
You know, but you're, you're taking, you know, there's a reason why there's women's sports and men's sports. You're taking that woman's right to win that award away from her as a woman.
Right. Yeah. What happened? What happened to supporting women?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, like I said, there's a reason why there's men's and women's sports. Just like we saw in the Olympics recently.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, that's sad. But that's nice to know, you know, where you stand. It's difficult, you know, you want to be open-minded. You want everyone to have rights. But you also have to protect your children.
Sure. And everyone does have rights.
Right.
You have the rights as a US citizen. You have all your rights. No one should be different than anyone else.
Right. Yeah. So what about the Furbies?
I am not familiar with this. You know, I'm, I know a little bit about it. I, you know, so we go back to mental health. I would say, you know, personally, I view that as a mental health issue. I, you know, if you're referring to yourself as something other than a human being, you know, you can't ask me to accept that because I know that that's not true.
Right.
It's not a fact, you know, so, yeah.
It's not a biological.
Yeah, there's something there that this person's hurting about and needs help on, you know? And I think ignoring that and going along with it is, you know, a treacherous slope.
Yeah, true.
I think the American Pediatric Society has talked about this in recent articles.
Yeah. Yeah. It's an interesting, interesting concept.
And the disservice we're doing to children.
Yes. Yeah, to just say, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Accepted. So it's, it's, it's good to, you know, a lot of these things won't come up in our area or in our district. But it's paramount on people's minds, you know, as to whether our board members, where they stand on, on the issues that affect them. You know, whether they be conservative values or liberal values or whatever. It's the school. It's the education. And it's about learning. And keep it, keep it to that subject.
Yes, exactly. Read arithmetic.
Exactly, exactly. So speaking of that, is there anything else? Because we do also offer everyone to be able to talk about anything that is on social media or a rumor that you want to dispel? Because a lot of times during this time of year, there are a lot.
I really, you know, I haven't been attacked. There's been some goofy little things out there that have been posted. You know, I'm strong in my convictions. I don't need to worry about, you know, people can have their say, again. You know, I go back to, you know, don't, don't be judgmental, be inquisitive, you know? So, you know, I see a lot of judgment passed around on social media. And it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate for those people that that's what they, you know, kind of stoop to, but, you know. There was one today and she questioned something I put out there in a way, and I really don't know what she was implying. I gave her a simple answer. I, you know, I know a lot of different forums will have a lean to them. I'm strong in my convictions. I'll go and talk to anyone, you know? And we can walk away agreeing to disagree, but I'll listen to what you have to say.
So are you offering that on your website and your Facebook? You know, for people to get ahold of you and ask direct questions about where you stand and what you bring to the table?
Sure, I have no problem with that. I will get back to you as soon as I possibly can. I feel like a one-legged man in a bucket contest. Exactly, so. So I think, I think I've put myself pretty well out there.
Yeah.
You can pretty well tell where I stand.
Yeah.
I mean, I started off my page with points of who I am.
Yeah. So if you took this time to talk to your voters and tell them why they should vote for you on November 5th, what would you say to them? The PG version, right?
Well, I've raised, well, raised, you know, you're never done raising your kids. But, you know, five kids. I love the kids. I have a strong heart for the Romeo Schools. They've done a great job with my kids so far. Uh, they've done a great job with my kids so far and uh, I wanna be a big part of that. Uh, I've been a, a big part of the academy, uh, especially the engineering and working with them. Uh, I enjoy that group of one I've dealt with and that. I, I didn't get to mention this, I, I've, I've dealt with uh, AL Homes Academy, it's an inner city school. Um, we started a little science program there because our, one of our plants is near it.
Okay.
And um, uh, it's been probably more rewarding for me than for them to come in. And uh, we do a, a rocket launch every year with them. Um, when I go there, you know, I'm, I'm called, my company's name's Flexing Gate, Mr. Flexing Gate at times, oh, you're gonna do the rocket launch, stuff like that. So, um, you know, it's uh, very rewarding for me. So I, I love pouring back into the schools and helping support them, uh, obviously I'm an engineer, so that's a lot of my focus. But um, and keeping the status quo, you know, let, let's keep our kids protected, safe. And uh, I keep a lot of the uh, you know, political ideologies that seem to try to invade. And uh, to me, be emotional decisions, keep that out.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good concept. So is there anything else you wanna tell your voting public? You've pretty much covered it all.
Have I covered it all?
Yeah, yeah, you've done great.
Thank you.
Right on time, so we thank you for coming here to the MIT TV.
It's a pleasure, yeah.
You're gonna spend some more time here now.
Yes, yes, I will.
On that board, you'll be here, they're here every, what, Brendan, are they here every week?
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday.
Oh, okay, cool.
So you'll be getting a touch of the MIT TV.
I will say it's gonna be interesting for me, every board I've been on has been a closed board, your meetings are closed, this is an open board, so it's a little more interesting. And when you brought up the discussion, I'm like, oh yeah, that open discussion's a little different, so you're gonna have to make a little effort.
Yeah.
And I'm, and I'm up to making the effort, but it is, it's gonna be different, it's gonna be different than boards that I've, you know, been on.
Yeah, it'll be a new experience, well, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks you, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me, yeah.